Okay, I've got 5:00 on the hour. I'll ask Brother Coleman, or, well, wait a minute. Get ahead of myself. Call this meeting order at 5:00. I'll ask Brother Coleman for a word of prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we just want to thank you today. We thank you for what you're doing and what you're about to do in our great city. Lord, we ask you to give us understanding, lead us and guide us. And, Lord, just touch our community and our board members on the City Council and the mayor, Lord, that we be directed and knowing exactly what to do. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes as read. I've got a first.
I'll second.
Second by Mary Bell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have some visitors here. Dan Drain, he's our financial auditor, and he's going to do a presentation with us. Dan, do you care to come up and explain?
I'd like to have been here a little earlier to do this, but we're like so many other people. We're short-staffed.
This is our audit staff right now.
We have about six or seven of these.
Trust me, I know all you will.
The separate pages are, this is called Satchman fourteen report. It's what we're required to give the council. And the reason that we're required to do that is that in a lot of cases, or in most cases, all the work that we do on this, fieldwork, we do here at City Hall, Lisa and the mayor and the staff, in a lot of cases, the council or the legislative body doesn't know anything about the fact that she even been on it. So this is pretty much a standard letter. First page, there's only real significant estimate in this depreciation. Of course, you know, you assign some kind of a value to it, and you put the number of years you think, and put a method on it. No significant difficulties dealing with management, no unchanges to errors or anything, any disagreements with management. We did ask you to give us a letter telling us certain things, it's your responsibility. No consultation with other independent accounts, other than the fact that there's a department in Litchfield that actually does the financial statements before we start on it. So the bound copy is the actual audit report. It begins on really page one. This is a clean opinion, no exceptions taken. We are like a lot of other people, we are heavily regulated, and this report is a little different than any of them that you've had before. In substance, it ends up saying pretty much the same thing in a different order.
Right.
And somebody makes a lot of money, I'm assuming, for doing this. But anyway, it's a clean opinion. Page four, this is stating net position. This is the balance sheet of the city overall. It has two different presentations. The business-type activities, the water sewer and so forth, that part of it's going to be the same always, because that part of it is a business activity. You know, if you're billing customers and it's supposed to be self-sufficient, that the revenues cover the expenses. The governmental activities have two different presentations. This one is converted to a basis as if it were business-type. So all of your fixed assets on the governmental side, like fire engines, this building, all of that is set up and depreciated. And any long-term debt that you have, the personal liabilities, is all treated as a liability. But under this presentation, the total net position of governmental activities, that's going to be general fund and road and LGEA and all those kinds of funds. It's just under $5 million. And the business-type activities, net position is at 5.3. So the city overall net position is about, is $10,275,658. Then on page five, this is also in the business-type presentation. And if you start with that first column, that are expenses. So any government entity, the first thing that you're here for is to provide services to your people. So you start with those expenses of 1.4 million. Then to the right, you show how it's paid for. Well, there's very little services for the governmental. You have some grants. Then the bulk of that, had you not had all these revenues at the bottom, you'd have had about a $278,000 loss. Then you have general revenues of $1,372,067. So the change in net position, the actual net position of the city governmental side improved by $1,094,201. The business-type activities, water sewer sanitation, had a loss of $98,309. So the city overall had a gain of just under $1 million. And there's a breakdown later that shows water sewer and sanitation separately. Page six is the balance sheet and the way that you would budget the general fund. You only book current assets, cash, receivables, utility deposits. And the only liabilities are the ones you pay currently, accounts payable, crew payroll, so forth. And then, and total fund balance of these is $3,732,542. So then, bottoming shows how you get from one to the other. So you pick up the capital assets and you deduct all of the revenues. So this presentation, the fund balance, is actually, you know, about $1,200,000 less than it is when you do the government-wide business-type. And seven is the income statement of this presentation. And still not a great deal doing that change in fund balance overall. The net profit, if you will, on governmental is $1,188,234. So it increased 2.5 million to 3.7 million. Then page eight, this is how you get from one to another, in $1,188, this one and the $1,094 on the governmental or the business-type. So then page nine breaks down between water sewer and sanitation. All of these had a positive net position. But when you get over to page 10, then you look at the income statement. Then you show the changes in net position. Water made a little money, sanitation made a little money, and sewer showed a loss of $143,789. And that probably doesn't surprise anybody.
No.
Because that's always the one that's hardest to make it break even. Cash flow is on page 11. This is actual money in the amount. So if you look at sewer on that, even though it showed a loss on page 10, it still had positive cash at the end of the year. Cash overall increased by $525,000, and sewer even increased by $127,000. And then, again, that shows at the bottom where all the cash comes from and what it's spent for. Any questions on the actual basic financial statements themselves? There are lots and lots of notes that are required with these now. First one is just explain what the funds are about. The first one would be in real interest, probably. Page 21, here, financial statements payable as a federal. The general fund, this goes back some years when we set this as far as the business funds, water sewer sanitation on the general fund, because there have been, there's some years when they definitely weren't self-sufficient. And the general fund covered a lot of the expenses. So this is something that, you know, hopefully, started to get into positions where the vote can be paid back. Transfers of funds. Page 22 shows the changes in fixed assets. Governmental, not a whole lot of additions. There were only $122,672 added. And then there were some things sold, written off, whatever. So there were $244,000 additions, and then, having factor everything in, the net decreased about, decreased by about $100,000. And the business-type activities, very little additions on that. There were some things added to it, some water sewer improvements, machinery and equipment, construction and process. But, so that's what decreased, decreased by about $109,000. And the bottom shows depreciation and how it was allocated. Page 23, and this is debt. And if you look at the column for additions, additions to debt, you see there's none. Everything you did during the year last year was to repay debt. Debt, again, that wasn't always the case here. You know, I can remember times when there was, you know, a fair amount of borrowing early in the year to wait for the taxes to come in and that kind of thing. So it's been some time since you've had to deal with that.
We've been blessed.
You have. And, you know, and basically, you know, if you're looking at the general fund debt, you know, it's basically, just for all practical purposes, you owe $200,000 to the year. Basically, debt-free for, you know, a city of this size. And then, you know, all these others at the bottom, this is all debt that was used to finance something of consequence. Page 24 shows what it takes to pay those out. Page 25. Of course, the big one now, I've been on here for a few years, starts in the middle of page 25, and this is all disclosures on pension and OPEB funds. OPEB is the other post-employment benefits, which is health insurance, that all governments in Kentucky that participate in retirement are all subject to this. You can, well, you can see if you go back to these numbers at the beginning, say, if you go back to page four, if you look at total liabilities, net pension liability for the city as a whole was $1,876,330, and the OPEB liability was $563,269. You know, this is not anything that you have to pay back now. This is $2.5 million of liabilities that if, say, one day, decided to go around to all the cities in Kentucky and hold their hand out, and that's what Hartford would owe. There's a movement to work that down, and it is being worked down a little.
Is there anything in the legislative body on that right now?
It's a tremendous burden. And Kentucky is not the worst state in the nation on pension, but it's very near the worst. Page 34 is a general fund budget. I don't think there really is change about what you probably seen before, but the revenues were $1,275 better than budgeted. Expenditure were $86,000 over the amount that was budgeted, but, you know, in total, there was $1,088,538. And then, then you go through these transfers in and out, and you're eventually on fund balance as a whole, you're basically budgeted to have $1,529,51, and you had $3,737,15. So your bottom line bonus was $2.2 million better than the amount that you budgeted for. There's several more pages of all this pension and OPEB business. Page 41 just breaks down special revenue funds. These are all government-led, road, LGEA cemetery fund. See, the income statement for them, they all had an increase, but the fund balance on cemetery fund is negative, and that comes from, I mean, you know, the money's there, but it owes it back to another fund. 43 just breaks down all the general fund expenditures. 44 and 45 are the reports that we do on time control. This is one that we don't very often get to do this, but there aren't really, there aren't really any findings at all on that. The only thing we have is on 46. We always, we do very often have to have some suggestions, kind of thing. And the only thing here, really, that we noted was that, now that you do have some money, you're running a little bit over on FDIC insurance, and you're supposed to have that all secured by bonds, and it's awful. Although, that's just something, just work with the bank and make sure that they pledge enough securities to cover something if you have a bank.
And I know that since that, Lisa has already addressed all of that, so that is taken care of.
But like I said, compared, we've been doing this for, I don't know, 11, 12 years, and what this looks like now compared to what it looked like when we were in service is totally, totally different, Dan.
In the right direction.
Definitely in the right direction.
And I appreciate y'all's work, because I could not sit back there and look at all that paperwork all day long. So I appreciate y'all's work that you all do, so.
Well, I've been doing this for 40-plus years.
So you've got the patience for it now, don't you? So thank you for all of doing that. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Alrighty, thank you, Dan.
Give me.
Huh?
Do you have to present?
No, no. Just a presentation.
Have a safe trip home.
Yep, thank you all.
Thank y'all.
City Attorney, do you have anything to bring forward?
Y'all kept me quite busy the last couple of months, so this is a little quiet.
Well, hang in there, we got more.
Oh, I know, I'm still working on Rachel's stuff, but she sent me.
Just hang on. Alright, thank you. Alright, before you have the financial reports, after being reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept the financial reports.
I make the motion we accept the financial.
I second.
I have a first and a second, first by Mary Bell, second by Stacia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, on old business, we're on the second reading on the ordinance number 2023-02 for the 2023-2024 final finance, financial budget, sorry. I'm sure everybody's had time to look over that. I'll ask for a motion to accept the ordinance.
I'll make it.
First by...
I'll second.
First by Tony. Second by Mary Bell. Okay, being that this is an ordinance, we'll have to do a roll call vote.
Yes. Sorry.
Stacia?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
All yes. Alright, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, it's all in old business. In new business, we have a first reading for ordinance 2023-03, alcohol license fees. Basically, it hasn't increased or anything, we just have to do this yearly. So this is just the first reading on that. If somebody wants to read that ordinance out loud for the public, I'll be okay with that.
I'll read it.
Okay.
An ordinance combined with KRS 243.070 in section one, article 15 F of ordinance 2020-02, the alcohol beverage control ordinance to establish the annual alcohol regulatory license fee.
Alright, thank you. So like I said, all that stays the same, there's no changes on that, so that's just something we have to do yearly. Okay.
Motion to accept?
No, that'll be next meeting. So we have a resolution that needs to be passed, 2023-02. It's the Ellis Park Resolution. Jeff, do you care to read that resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Hartford proposes to renovate Ellis Park provided for the health and well-being of the general public, and whereas the City of Hartford intends to make an application to the Department of Local Government for assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965, and whereas the Land and Water Conservation Fund is limited funding a maximum of 50% of proposed project estimated at $175,359.52. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Hartford hold in a reserve 50% of the proposed project cost for the purpose of matching the Land and Water Conservation Fund assistance, and be it further resolved that in the event a grant is awarded, the City of Hartford understands that it will sign assurances to comply with all the applicable federal and state laws, rules, and regulations, especially Title IX of the Civil Rights Act and section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Does everybody understand, basically, this is a resolution that's stating that we will match the grant to go forward with this project? So this is a resolution saying that we accept this. With that being said, I'll ask for a motion to accept this resolution.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution for the Ellis Park project.
First by Stacia.
I'll second.
Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. I'm gonna get that.
Do you have a seal? Yeah, give me that for you.
Okay, visitors, did we have anybody that wants to discuss anything in the crowd? With that being said, I'll ask for roundtable discussions with the councils. Jeff, do you have anything?
Yep, so working with a gentleman from here in Hartford, Dwayne Bishop is his name. He works with a program that's called Aspire. It's a summer work experience, and so he's asked if the City of Hartford would allow us to let these, I guess, young adults work at Ellis Park. So the kind of things that we've talked about would be like weed eating, trimming, not on the riders or the heavy equipment, but, you know, hand-operated equipment. And from what I understand, he sent me this paper for you guys to look over, but there's certain, some of the kids are only allowed to work certain hours a month.
Yeah.
So like, he sent me an example for two of the gentlemen, two of the young guys working. One of them gets 13 hours, and the other one gets six hours. All the pay is coming from this aspire. I think the only thing that we will probably have to do is provide the equipment, and then maybe a work plan on what we want them to do, what they want to accomplish. You know, we talked about, like I said, weed eating, mowing, push mowers, painting, general cleanup with the trash and things like that. I'm also considering, you know, I think we can work at the boat ramp, that's part of the city, you know, it's a park down there. Weed eat, the walking path, mowing that, you know, and taking care of that. I think it's kind of a win, you know, it's given the youth some experience. Dwayne, he would be the adult there with them, so, and I think he gets like three or four hours a day, I think, is how his salary works out. But once again, that's paid by this aspire work experience. So that's...
I think it's a great, I think it's great that you've looked into that. I say we move forward on doing this, and if they need any paperwork for me to sign off on, I say let's move on with. Does anybody have any objection to any of that? I think it's good, so I think if they need any paperwork from me or Lisa to sign, or Terry to sign.
I was gonna say, I'm just, I would be curious as to what the contract says for like the insurance.
Well, I know, probably have to link up with Jason, you know, maybe get you and Dwayne to meet and stuff.
Yes, I'll be home.
Yeah, you know... Maybe even store equipment, a couple weed eaters and a mower up there at Ellis Park or something like that. That way, it's there, they don't have to come down and, you know, the weed can be given. And I know they're ready to start. I think, I think the hours increase, you know, like maybe in July. From what I know right now, I think he has four employees, four youths that are eligible.
I appreciate your research in that, that was tremendous. Thank you for that.
And that's...
And just let me know.
What's the age of her, you don't have to be 14?
14 to 21.
After being 14. I know a 12-year-old who's big, it looks like he's 14.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. David, do you have anything to bring to the table?
Just, we, me and you and some boardroom's need to get with Ms. Phelps on the property of Ellis Park before we get her in there, like, so.
Okay.
She's moving to Owensboro.
She is?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, we can do that. I'll put that on my list to get with you as well.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything. I think everything's going pretty smoothly. I think all of our departments are doing good. We got our new fire truck, everybody's excited about that. Meredith's working on some events, she'll be bringing those forward pretty quickly. I know that they've met with the committee on the Oktoberfest, so they got some big things that they're wanting to bring forward. I think she's gonna do some more scavenger hunts and water days and stuff like that, so she's gonna be bringing us a presentation to do all that with. She don't tell me too much, because I like to tell everybody what we're doing. She likes to surprise everybody, so. I don't have nothing other than that.
She's not here to, I was gonna praise Ronnie. I saw her work in action the other day. She had stopped at a home and had brought their attention, they needed to address their yard, and the next thing I know, their yard was addressed, so I think that's going well.
Yeah, that's one of, and she's unique in that way, because she can go with them and talk to them and go to their level with them where they're aggravated, so it's a unique job, and Jeff done it for a long time, he knows. It's not the best glorious job to have, is somebody's got to do it, so.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Jerry, do you have anything? You're awful quiet over there.
Well, I've been that way most of the day, and I'm trying to plan in this state.
Okay.
I'm like Stacia, I think Ronnie was doing a wonderful job.
Just for, just for the councils as well, we did send letters for abandoned properties. I think we had 26 on the list. Getting some emails, getting some phone calls, but hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do the steps that we have to do to do the right thing, so. And I'll get with you later on and go for there.
And I think she's doing a good job.
She is.
She's even in place on Clay Street, that's a little bit better.
Yeah.
Not that it'll stay at...
And you know, she's, yeah, she's doing a really good job.
Yeah.
Tony, do you have anything to bring forward?
No.
Alright.
Mayor, I was gonna say, I think that the paving job done on Iron Mountain Road is probably the smoothest road we've ever had.
It looks good.
Yeah.
Let's hit up Peach Alley next, if we can, and then...
We're doing it, Mayor, it's first way to Lisa. I'll put the big ones on that. Mayor, I want to thank Jason and his crew, what they did down here on Union Street. We had a big hole come in the yard, and part of our town comes from Union Street over on the other street. We're running right through this yard, and it was a sinkhole. It went from a little hole to a sinkhole. It went from a little hole to a sinkhole.
We made the same deal we made with everybody else, they bought the town, and he just couldn't understand why, I'm gonna charge him later, I said, personally, that's the way I did with everybody, you know. It was deeper than we thought it was, and we bought the town.
We had to make a stop point, because it was here till 6:30 in the morning, but we got it all registered, like y'all. But it's settled, we're about to get to it. And we did get reimbursed, we did get the check the other day.
I want to thank Jeannie for traveling from grad and assisting Jeff and I with the grant process. God bless you, I would not want to gather all the grant information, but thank you.
And that's something that's unique, y'all. If you thank it, I guarantee it, Grad can find it. And that's why it's a good resource to have. I'm telling you, I'm thankful for Grad, so.
Did we meet all the requirements for...
Yeah, basically, the application finished, I tried to get signatures.
So with that being done, will that be one of the things, and I don't care to travel up there with you all, well, we have, it's better to do a presentation in Frankfurt once that's done. So once that's done, we'll do a presentation, and it's better to show your face than Grad doing it. So I will go up with you all to do that presentation. It's important to show your face and an interest in it, so. Alright, with that being said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make the motion.
First time he's said something, I'm taking his, I'm sorry.
I can't say a word without saying it's happening.
I'm taking Jerry's motion. I second it. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.
First time this week tonight is to get out of here.
Y'all have a good weekend, holiday weekend.